Any donations? All right, we're gonna move on to item four, presentation of Brad Hutchinson, Chief Technology Officer for my government online MGO to discuss the function capabilities of the MGO.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
You're not Mr. Fisher.
Yeah, so this item, we're actually gonna have to move part our next city council meeting. Unfortunately, the person that was gonna be presenting today got sick.
So we're not talking about it?
Not today.
Okay. So, we can make a couple comments since we have it on here. MGO should, when rolled out across the city, should pretty well revolutionize how we track assets, how we do the business of the city. The license for MGO, we have it covered in general funds with some of the money that we put back into general funds, so we're not having to come back. We'll come back and ask you for the money, but we're not having to go find it anywhere. And I'll be excited to hear.
Of course, you know, the favorite saying, I'm about to say it again. So, we have had MGO under a contract since May 2020, an interlocal, and it never came before city council. So, yeah.
What was the amount?
Quite a bit, in fact, I've got it in the office, but it never came before, city council, never was approved by city council. It was just signed off on, so we're gonna do what, Mr. Thompson? They get the cap over again.
I wasn't gonna say it.
So that's why, that's why we're gonna bring it back to you. We've been working with Liz and Ryan, and they, basically the whole shebang, we're gonna bring it back to you in about three weeks, or fourteen.
So, real quickly, and just as small summary you can do, what is it exactly that this actually been in place since 2020 without council approval? Does it actually do, I mean, in most simplest layman's terms?
So, we have two departments that are currently using it, so permitting's using it right now, and also code compliance is using it. So, in, for building inspections, it tracks all of our applications that go through there, and it routes, it gives information whenever. So first, it starts with plan review, so it does all the plan reviews, sends all the messages to, automatically sends them to the applicant. And in addition to that, once they move into inspection, you can call in inspection, and as inspector is driving there, automatically will send the applicant information that an inspector's going to their location. We are currently working with GIS, and where we can actually have live data, or close to, in where anybody will be able to click on a parcel and see what's active in that parcel based on the information. That's still something that I have to talk to Dan of how much information we want to be providing, but most likely, it's just going to have the case number, and if it's an active project, and what phase they're in. And then for code compliance, I, they're just also using it for tracking management for it. And those were, I believe those were the three departments in plan, and planning and zoning. For some reason, planning and zoning never got live, so we're all, we've kinda picked up, and we're ready to go, it's just.
Building Services was using it as well, or something?
I don't.
I think they were.
Not, there was only three departments on there.
Maybe, I don't know, anyway. Anyway, it wasn't brought to y'all by.
So, let me ask you a question in that regard. So, the initial purchase of the program, and then is there a monthly fee or quarterly fee assessed to that?
I believe there is, so what we're gonna do, it has everything, everything's laid out, I don't have it right in front of me, but there will be a payment upfront, and then it'll be a monthly fee.
So, the payment upfront is for, I believe it's for Chris's department, and where it's a tracking system that they're gonna do.
For equipment?
Exactly, and I think he's told me that this is, by us going with them, it's a reduction in their department of the cost.
Did we not have a proposal about a year ago, a year and a half ago, of the system that we had, and then we had another proposal about another system?
There was.
And yet this was approved, it was never brought before council.
There was, so May 2020, never brought to council, it's basically the same thing, and then there was an addendum, like a year later, and it was kinda just, kinda tacked on. And so that's what we discovered, and that's why, I mean, we literally put the halt to it.
I remember that day, 'cause that was a very contentious day, somebody got up and walked out, yelling at the council at that time.
Yeah, so we are, so what we wanna do, of course, on my end, I just wanna make sure it's done right for y'all. Okay, and we knew what's right for the city and citizens.
This one is a fraction of the cost of the one that was upset.
Okay.
And even though we're not, so we're working with all departments that are gonna be part of this, even though we don't have a contract, we're still working on things. It's just that for several departments, we can't go live because we don't have a contract yet, so they're ready to go, but we can't.
And Ryan has been really good about working with us and helping us, and it's like I told him the other day when we talked, the contract, because it never went to council, it's not binding, it's not legal. You know, and so, but he's been very good to continue to work with us. But May the fourteenth, we plan on having it all back.
May fourteenth?
Yes, sir, that's our goal.
So Elizabeth gave some real good technical answers that I can't give. This is what makes permitting timely and tracking of our assets accurate. That's my, like uneducated, that's what matters, that's what it does.
Yeah.
And it's a fraction of the cost of anything else we've looked at. That's significant to me, and it does the job that we need it.
Anything else out there like that? To my knowledge, we don't.
Which one?
Where's our internal auditor? When do they get to contracts and, and to legal? So, if we continue to go through this internal audit, you know, I know that we were going through department to departments, and this probably may be out of the scope, but it will, and it's probably a large task to undertake. Because it seems that we're still discovering stuff like this. We still haven't been able to get to legal that, where are you at right now?
Are you asking about the actual contract audit, or are you talking on the departmental?
She's doing a contract audit in her role as auditor that is separate and apart from the task force audit of the departments.
Okay.
And he's asking, I think it would more relate to where the contract audit is.
So, looking around, we have a lot, actually, they asked a question, because we've been talking about that today. Where on the contract audit is reading contracts, seeing what all we have there, talking to people to make sure things are being there. There is no final conclusion on that yet, it's kind of a gap, because it is a lot, I'm sure you can manage it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's an undertaking. However, we are trying to put some things in place that we know we need to do. Finance, and I've talked, from our, since I've been talking today, we're gonna use our Munis software to start the hot audit. We have a contracts module, we're gonna work on footnet in place, for our, hopefully next week, on doing some test runs to get that done. That is gonna help a lot, it will not be everything. One of the things that we've also been doing, usually when you have a contract, there are higher payments, and so, Hannah and I have, finance director Hannah and I have, sit down, we've talked about things, and she'll send them to me. If she has any questions, I'll send her back any questions, and we follow up. So the answer to the audit, I don't have a final answer, we are trying to put collect the steps in place to catch things on the front end.
Okay.
And Mayor, we ended up discovering this particular, we discovered this particular contract because we were nosing around, okay, how, okay, MGO, we've already got a contract, okay, well, let's just go back and see what we've got. Well, then we get to nosing around, and next thing you know, Nira's looking around, and it didn't ever came to council.
Okay.
So that's how that, we kinda just stumbled across it.
Counsel, any other questions?
I do have one, Elizabeth, just to get an understanding of the MGO software, you said it's being utilized by three departments? What expandability do you have, or where, how many more departments would you like to expand that out, or?
So it's gonna be for the whole city to be under. I don't have the number of all of the departments, but I'm more than happy to show you our flow charts for all of them that we have done already. So, and that's one of the goals, is to, with this system, we're gonna have better communication with, hopefully with Munis, have a better track record of how to keep being track of our assets. And most importantly, being able to talk internally through a system. And being transparent with our customers as well, because they're gonna be able to look at where their projects are at, and what has been holding them up. I don't know if that answered your.
Counsel, any other further questions? Elizabeth, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item five, Discover Odessa Quarterly Report. All right, this is your first one?
That's right.
You introduce yourself?
Yes, sir, hello, everyone. For those I haven't got to meet yet, I am Laura Martz, and I'm your new Director of Discover Odessa. I'm really glad to be here, I'm gonna, the agenda says Erica, and she respectfully allowed me to take on this role. And we'll just flip through the quarterly report here, I'll highlight a few things, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to stop me. Yes, first page, great, thank you so much. All right, so our first page here lists our total economic impact for these three months, which is nine million dollars, which is fantastic. And we have thirty-one total groups assisted in this quarter, and you see that it adds to forty-six thousand eight hundred and fourteen total attendees, and over fifty-five hundred total hotel nights. And then, it breaks it down, we'll stay on that page for just a second, sorry, I looked at your screen. It breaks down attendees, hotel nights, and economic impact per type, our meetings, our special events, and our sports, I love to see those, and you see sports is very high, which we know and love. We'll go to the next page, shows our groups assisted this month, so we had thirty-one groups listed in the page before, and then this breaks them down, and they are color coordinated, so you can see our sporting, regular meetings, and then other events. And one I wanted to highlight was Elevation on Tour, the crowd pleaser dance event that we had in January, that was that, what caused that really high economic impact, and we were really glad to have that event here. In January, we also had USA Youth Amateur Boxing, and boxing's really, there's a lot of great things happening in boxing, we're really glad to see that here. And then in February and March, we had, you know, some really great things happening. In February, I loved the D2 Leadership and Skills Conference that was here, that's gonna become an annual event. And as you guys know, I started mid-March, so these are all things that happened before I got here, and we'll give credit to my predecessor, Monica, who's done a great job, and I'm really glad to get to continue to carry this on. And then in March, we had great events, and you saw the Landman Paramount Production began, and we had the people here starting to film, which was really cool. The next page lists upcoming groups and events, this is separated out by month, so that we can really, you see that we have things scheduled out all the way into October of next year. Lots of great things happening, LULAC is the League of United Latin American Citizens, their state conference will be here in May, we're very glad to have that coming, and then plenty other exciting events. The next page is our marketing report, we have a really great marketing coordinator, Ms. Ashley, we love her, we love what she does. And you see we have some great following on social media, I know that social can sometimes be an enemy, but in the tourism industry, they, social is our friend, and we have a real great following and interaction there. On the top performing posts, the, it's hard to read there, but the first two are both things to do. You know, when you have guests in town, they look to your CBB or DMO, and they say, what's happening, what can we do while we're here, and we love that. I also wanna point out, we have a. I also wanna point out, we have a fifty-one percent open rate on our e-newsletter. Uh, the average open rate for emails in the industry, um, well, uh, industry overall, is anywhere between fifteen to twenty-five percent. So we have a very high open rate, and we are very glad about that. Lots of engagement. And then we have a kiosk over at the Marriott Convention Center that gets really good engagement. We're really hoping to expand those kiosks. Kiosk is something we can put in, um, multiple hotel and event areas, and they really gain interaction and really allow tourists to see firsthand what's happening and what else they can do while they're here, and what trips they can plan to come back. Next page is our advertising, and it lists, these are specific advertisements that we've placed, um, digitally and then in print. They've got really great responses and returns. These are all things that we can track and talk about anytime, if you like. And then last page on our team highlights, our sales team, we have two salespeople, and they did a total of five hundred and eighty sales calls, which is fantastic. They are constantly in communication with the meeting planners, uh, with our venues and our attractions. Really, um, trying to connect the two. I'm very proud of them. I'm very glad to be a part of this team, if I haven't mentioned that already. And in January, I wanted to point out that they went to the Southwest Showcase, uh, in Round Rock and had really great results there. That's where our team goes and meets meeting planners directly and tells them what we have to offer and bids to get the events here. Then, I, on, in January, it's listed Pan and Ballroom Discussion, because that's kinda where it started, right? But then you see in March, the Buyer's Two Arena Ribbon Cutting, we got to participate in that. We were very glad to be a part of that, and I, I love seeing what's happening there. I skipped over February, but February had a lot of great interaction, um, as well as our Unity Dinner in the Woodlands, and then that's where I showed the D two Leadership Skills Conference that's coming back. Very glad about that. Back to March, we did have the Texas Hotel and Lodging Association Lunch and Learn that we did in conjunction with Midland, because we have a lot of hotel partners that have properties in both of our cities. And so that was a very well-attended event. And, uh, you know, when you have one person in the, you may only have one person in the room, but that person has multiple properties, and so it was a, a really great turnout, and we had a, a really good time, and we learned a lot. You know, Texas Hotel Lodging Association is someone that we partner with. We appreciate them, and they are at our service to help us as we move our department forward and for our hotels. Because we partner with them, our hotels have access to them, and we are very glad about that. The last page shows our sports event recruitment program. We had, started with, uh, um, a hundred thousand dollars, and we've granted sixty-four thousand so far. We've got thirty-six remaining. We have events, um, already in the works. Um, our sales sports girl, Teresa, has actually more than we have money left for, which is fantastic. That's what we wanna see. We wanna get as much money to these, um, events as we can, and then get more from there, right? And you can see the impacts, um, of those events that we've supported so far. That is all I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
Laura, would you explain, for, at least for myself, maybe it'll help others, uh, right there on that page you're on, the Elevation on Tour, what would that be about?
Yes, sir. That was the one I mentioned in January that was the dance competition. Yes, sir, and, uh, it was held at the Marriott Convention Center. And if you don't know, girls' sports bring in the highest economic impact. If you wanna know why, you send your boy, and you'll send him with the team or the coach. But daddy sends her, his girl, and he wants the whole family, and he's going, and that's exactly what happens in the industry. So just so you know, um, girl's sports really have a great economic impact. Any other questions?
Also point out, the Desert Hawks, uh, and the Georgia Forest are gonna have their, uh, game this Saturday.
Oh, yes.
This is their, uh, opening season.
Correct.
The difference is, is that they will be, uh, viewed on NFL Network, and it'll be a noon kickoff. So, uh, tailgating starts. That's gonna be the difference. It's an elevated league now.
Yes.
So Odessa will be highlighted, highlighted on NFL Network for this season. So that's completely different. It's gonna put another focus on Odessa. So analytics is something that we need to watch out for.
Absolutely.
Look at.
Thank you.
Uh, for the reason is that we'll see if, you know, I don't know if these teams are gonna stay, but how many people are gonna be getting over? Because one of the things is that anybody that we remembered, all this is affecting the number one thing, tourism, hotels. But who, the number one that, that we get, because this is one thing I wanted to point out. This total economic impact, there are some people that actually think this is money that's coming into the city, like into our coffers. And what, the number one industry that benefits from all this is what?
Restaurants.
Restaurants. Okay. Yeah, yeah, people were paying attention in that meeting. So, uh, what was the last one?
Uh, hotel.
You're cheating, John.
He's been doing his research.
Yeah, so.
And, you know, those are numbers we can also pull separately as well, so you could actually see a little bit more of those broken down.
Okay. Sounds good. Very exciting. Very exciting. Counsel, any questions, comments?
One question. We had a, uh, in the past, uh, I know this isn't directly related to sports event recruitment, but we had talked in the past, I think Renee would remember that, uh, for the hotel motel tax, your department, uh, was estimating June, July, and August, uh, based on what you knew was coming. So we had a conversation two years ago, I think, that Monica at that time was going to start running her calendar year to June one to May thirty-first, so that she could actually capture the real numbers for June, July, and August, because she was having to estimate. And so that made her numbers. I don't know if that's still going on or not, but I thought I saw Renee walk in. But I'm sorry, Renee should have asked that. I don't know if anybody remembers that except for me, but it was important because we were estimating, you know, a quarter of the year.
Right, because we're putting a budget in, in May, and we still have through September. So we were looking at the last twelve months. I think that's what you're referring to. Yes. So we can have a, a very good guesstimate based on numbers versus looking to the future. And we know, you know, many of these things, we know what's coming in a year or two years. So, um, we have some pretty good numbers for that. And of course, the system they use to look at the number of hotel, how they get their economic impact numbers is a system, there's no guessing at it. You put the numbers in, and it gives you very accurate count.
Right, it's an industry standard.
I just wanna make sure we remember that, because.
Yes, yes.
That was a problem I had, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Anything else?
Counsel, anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
You did good for your first one?
Thank you.
Now, your husband wasn't paying attention. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and move on to item six, Discuss Purchase a Cargo Van for, uh, for Central Supply. Mr. Adams.
Mayor, Counsel. Um, as with other departments, vehicles have, uh, reached the end of their usable life.
One meeting at a time. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Vehicles have, uh, reached the end of their usable life. Uh, Central Supply is one of those that has reached the end of its usable life. Um, they currently have a pickup truck, which in rainy weather, when it does rain here, or windy weather, stuff gets damaged, et cetera. So we've decided to go with a cargo van, a high-roofed cargo van, install a liftgate on it, a partition, and some shelving on the inside. Can purchase this on a TIPS contract for sixty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. It is in stock, available for immediate delivery. Will just be, uh, held up for about thirty days for the outfit of the liftgate.
All right. Counsel, any questions? Comments?
No, very good.
All right. Thank you, sir. We're gonna move on to item seven, Discuss Partnering with the National Fitness Campaign. Mr. Reyes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counsel.
Good afternoon, sir.
Back in February, uh, we were contacted by a guy named, uh, Jack Lindham. He's a national partner with, uh, the National Fitness Campaign, and he was basically giving us a brief on, on some fitness courts that are going across the country. Uh, since Christina has been here, she's mentioned how she knew about it and the towns that are similar. Uh, well, not similar, but in our area that have purchased these, uh, fitness courts. Andrews, I think Monahans, Pecos, uh, actually OC has one, and I'm not sure about UTPB, but, uh, my office has contacted, uh, all these cities to try to get some information to see if that's something worth us bringing to, to light. Uh, we physically went out to the OC complex, and it's right by the gym, pretty neat, uh, it's secured, it's open to the public. Uh, so that's just something that we wanted to see with our, with our eyes.
Fitness court.
And we have a, we have a presentation, uh, that, that you'll be watching, so I was just gonna give you a brief.
I thought they were signing us up for something.
They are.
That'd be good. Yeah, yeah.
... to city parks and trails. We're bringing free.
Well, we can hear it.
Everywhere, and we're just getting started. Hi, I'm Mitch Managin, founder of the National Fitness Campaign. The National Fitness Campaign was founded in nineteen seventy-nine.
We gotta get the internet fixed downtown, man. Here comes the, uh, here comes the IT guy.
We always have trouble with this stuff. It sounded like a murder. Now, people texted.
They couldn't hear you?
No. I got a text from John.
Can they hear his name?
Yeah.
There we go. There we go.
First Fitness, redesigned for the twenty-first century, the Fitness Court is the world's best outdoor gym. Our seven movement, seven-minute system allows you to use your own body weight to get the perfect workout.
Oh. Oh, God, I was doing that this morning.
Is to build healthy communities by making outdoor fitness an essential part of people's lives, so that each day is better than the last. Now more than ever before, it is vital that we move fitness outdoors to remain safe, healthy, and strong.
Michiganders, uh, we, as soon as we can, we go outside, which is one of the reasons why the Fitness Court was such an attraction. What impressed us most was their basic philosophy, that they wanna provide world-class fitness for free. Truly, anyone can use, no matter what your age is, no matter what your physical fitness level is, no matter what your skills are, it is very adaptable.
Thousands of certified ambassadors will be trained to deliver classes and challenges and clinics as part of our National Fitness Campaign. New programs are bringing students outdoors across America. The Fitness Court mobile app is your gateway to enroll in these programs. Simply scan the new visual wall with your phone to access a library of free workouts designed to optimize your experience on Fitness Court. Learn the moves and tape challenges as we dig deep to create impact for our partners across America. This year, we are thrilled to introduce Fitness Court Public Art. Cities have the opportunity to select a local artist to design their fitness core, using the power of the arts and fitness outdoors in iconic public spaces. We're proud to have helped cities of all sizes raise millions of dollars from respected sponsors to support free fitness. Wherever fitness is a priority, you can find a fitness. Building beyond two hundred cities and colleges, we're partnering with large cities using urban movement data to map the best locations for helping people reach. We're bringing fitness courts to within ten minutes of population centers everywhere.
They provide these wraparound services that from the city's perspective, that's what you want in a partner like this. You want it to come presented to you on a silver platter with a bow tied around it. They're one of the best partners, I think, that I personally have ever worked with.
Sir, almost one point two million members of the state. And this partnership really is an opportunity for us to bring scalable, free, health and wellness opportunities to our community. So I would actually invite cities and organizations to take this opportunity to invest in the Fitness Courts. To be very honest with you, the feedback from different municipalities and different communities has been very positive.
We're committed to raise a hundred and fifty million dollars to bring the campaign to one thousand cities and schools building the largest fitness movement in the world. Join us. Let's make world-class fitness free.
So Max, the one that, so see, does it have a shade structure?
Yes, sir.
Uh, does it cover the whole part?
It does.
The whole thing?
Yes, sir. And that costs for that shade, uh, shade structure.
There's one simple hearing attack anyone can use to improve their hearing almost overnight. Did you know that hearing impairments have nothing to?
Yeah, yeah, we agree.
So again, right now, it's just a presentation, something that was brought to our attention. Uh, we're just wanting to find out whether or not we wanna move forward and put in this into the project, but, into the budget process. Uh, they do offer grants. There's three different phases of this, uh, but there is a cost. There is a cost at the end of the day, and it's upwards of, uh, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus your shade. Pretty good deal, uh, as far as what it provides. Uh, so again, it's just a.
Any particular area that you were targeting?
So one of the things, and we have slides that we're gonna go out, he, here's a, the funding requirements, and we have about seven to nine slides. And so basically what they do is, they ask you, and before we start, uh, a feasibility study, they ask us what areas we would recommend and what parks. We initially went, uh, right off the bat Memorial, given where it stands on Forty Second, right across from the mall. There's a little place in the back that could possibly house this. Uh, we did McKinney, and then we also did Floyd Gwynn. And so after we send all this information, they do their homework, and it's on a funding, it's on a, on a number basis at that point to see how much activity is in each part of the city and where it would fit best.
Who would do the visibility study?
They did it.
They did.
Yeah, we're.
Be no cost to the city for the study?
No, sir. Non-binding, and it's part of here, that, here's a, the picture of the shade structure that goes over the, the entire platform. And there's your cost there. That's shipping and handling installed. And then here's our report, uh, the ones that they identified within, across the city.
There's no room at Jim Parker?
No.
Royalty.
And our vision, you know, i- within the Parks and Reg Department, you know, we want, we want, if this is even a thought, we wanna put it in a place where it's gonna be used, uh, fortunately for OC, where they place theirs, it's right next to the new, uh, athletic field, the football field or the track.
Track.
And so it butts up right next to it, so it's enclosed inside the parking lot. Uh, but when I visited this past week, well, yesterday, we visited it, and they have classes on that facility Monday through Thursday, but then they've opened it up to the public, and it's free. You can drive straight in and jump on the facility right there to the, to your right. Lady claims that they, they get a lot of use out of it. She loves it. And so there's, soon as you walk up, there's a scan code, a, a QR code, that you just scan it, and then you get certified to be an instructor. One of our initial, uh, thinkings were, if we were to bring this to Odessa, we could either, well, one, we, we would get certified as staff, and then two, we could easily go to all the workout facilities in Odessa and probably bring a private or an instructor to, to hold a couple of classes a week. And so you can see the change and what they bring to the table, so. So here, here's our study, and it goes based off of numbers. And eighty, uh, McKinney, our, our initial, uh, recommendation was Memorial, but McKinney actually came up with a higher number.
When you, when you say number, number of visitors?
Visitors, activity, and who's there, and at what time. It, it's all a number thing, and so they put it all together, and this is where it came out. So it's, uh, the Comanche Trail, the connectivity up there, the highly active areas, and the various sites. Uh, is basically what they were doing on, on, actually McKinney.
And that's what I was gonna say, too. The three sites that you have, uh, suggested all have trails, running trails, which would be great. People are already going out there to go run.
And that was one of the things that John and I talked about whenever we presented these. Uh, we've been with a handful of, of staff, uh, not just in our department, but other departments. When we sat in these, uh, meetings, we talked about, you know, what we wanted to bring and what the vision was in order to make this thing popular.
Have we seen anything as far as from take stock, what the encroachment's gonna be on the park at McKinney?
No, but I'm very interested in that, just because of the other things that we got going on over there.
Yeah.
But as far as, you know, th- those three parks there are, are three of our biggest parks. And so, again, they, these are more slides that kinda just shows you the activity of, of what's going on in that area. And then there's a couple of other parks that they just went ahead, and I guess through our website, they identified and, and did their own study on those parks. And you see how the numbers, some of them are slightly lower. they identified and did their own study on those parks and you see how the numbers, some of them are slightly lower.
It's interesting.
It's pretty neat, it's set in place, you know, but you know, it's, it's gonna be a budgeted process for sure.
This would be next year's budget?
Yes, sir.
With this upcoming budget?
Yes, sir.
Council, we have any discussions on this?
I like the idea, I mean especially with us being on the Quality of Life Committee, this is another great addition to that, so if we can, someone make it feasible and work for us, I think it'd be a great, great, great addition to our.
And I, I think with OC opening up theirs to the public, I think that's gonna help out. Of course, being in parks and rec, my first concern is, you know, is it gonna be used first of all? Second, is it gonna turn into a vandalism site, which, you know, we're gonna try to do as much as we can to get that, get away from that, but that's why you gotta also be strategic on where you place it. If it goes to Memorial or somewhere like that where it's highly visible and active, you know, maybe people get away from that and use it for what it's worth.
That location, high visibility, that, that's my concern too. Is it gonna be, you know, will it be a magnet for vandalism too? You know, I saw the boxes, they're concrete.
Yes, sir.
I just thought skaters, not that it would happen, but.
And they're all built the same that way and you know, you have the little stepping stones and stuff, so that's, that too is just a concern.
Okay.
One of the, the positives on that for the one at OC, you know, it was funded by First Basin. So that could be something that we partner up with or somebody, not necessarily them, but that was funded through First Basin and so maybe we could solicit, you know, some, some sponsorships for that end if, if we decide to move that way.
So here's, here's, here's the legal question. Since it's an exercise place, what's the liability?
Yep.
That is the problem because you're not gonna be in a position where you get a waiver signed but the council one comes up there. And so we would have liability if someone failed, if someone tripped, if someone pulled us or they went for one too many.
Well, the, the, the boxes, the boxes is one. Well, jumping up, missing it, scraping.
Breaking an ankle?
Yes. You know, I, you have to, this is the time to ask these questions. What's the liability issue in here? Well, let's take Sherwood, don't they have a, what do you call that sport for?
The skate park. Yes.
Are we, as a city liable for anything that happens on there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything that goes on property, we're.
That's, that's all that fall on us.
Something like this that we don't have, we can, we can put skate at your own risk, exercise at your own risk, but ultimately, we still.
It's the same thing, they put it, you go to the baseball park, you know, be careful, there's this foul ball area. You still, even though that disclaimer's on there, you still can sue for them.
Yes, sir.
How many claims have we had from the Sherwood Skate Park?
I'll tell you, I don't know, but I don't, I'm not aware of any.
As long as I've been here, we've had.
Yeah, I haven't heard of any, that's why I was asking.
Well, now that we're bringing light to it.
Yes.
Might need to look at it.
The thing is, like Mr. Jones said though, you can have waivers signed all day long and they protect you very little.
Right.
It looks nice.
And I'm glad you brought that up because this past year, we went to NRPA, which is our national conference and that was one of the things that we saw, I've always liked, that I wanted to bring back into Odessa, into our park system is, is an exercise set that goes around the walking trail, which a lot of times they're placed wrong because the majority of the people recommend that you place it up in front as a hole. That way everybody can use it because by the time you take off running, there's a chance that you may not stop at the next stop.
That's why when you said that about putting that Memorial in the back, you know.
Yeah, what's the chances? Yes, sir.
Yeah.
But they, it's definitely a product that they put out at NRPA, which.
I like it, I mean, I was just doing those exercises this morning. No, I, I, I like it. It's not everybody can pay a membership gym or be able to have a trainer. This is something you can look on your phone and do it. Definitely need the shade with our West Texas scorching heat ray. Know what's gonna be out there, they can't touch it and have a second degree burn. Do you need a consensus to move forward on this or even just to?
One more question maybe you don't like.
Yeah. You're just thinking about one for now?
For now, yes. Again, given that OC has one, for sure.
Right.
I think they had mentioned that UTPB was in the process of getting a second one. If, the most you can get is three. And so, you know, if, if it happened to get three, you know, I don't know what they're looking, looking at, but they definitely like the one that they have at OC. But yes, it's.
Okay.
Max, I was gonna just ask, first off, for the quality of life, this is exciting to me.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
But a couple of questions. For the installation, does it, would the company do the installation or would you be getting a bunch of boxes and parks has to do the installation?
They come and install that part of it. We would probably have to lay the foundation of the concrete slab.
And the second thought is to look at the equipment really close because coming up off of liabilities for the city, I mean, I was trying to analyze it really quickly. Seems like some of the apparatuses, they could be more dangerous for children or up higher.
Yes, yes. Yeah, like I said, I, I visited the one at OC and I saw that right off the bat, yes.
Yeah.
And I, I didn't see anything that said that it was designated for a certain age group.
Right. It's self-eliminating, you know, if they're too small, they, they can't reach it.
Correct.
So what, what are we, what are we looking at? Do we need to consensus to move forward?
Do you still have consensus?
All right, Count.
I can. This was just our, our initial stages. They just wanted us to present it.
Well, Council, do we have a consensus? Just, uh, Max just kicked the tires, so to speak?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's do it. Just one.
Experimental.
Yes. Discuss lighting at Salinas Park?
Yes, so we've been talking to staff as well. We're very limited on, on lighting within our park system and so we wanted to address right off the bat, one of the south side parks. And the one that came up to mind right off the bat because it does have a huge walking trail is Salinas. Right off of, in the south side, we have also a community center there, so we just feel like it's gonna be a, a big asset to that particular part. It sits right along Clements.
So the lights would go around the?
The entire walking trail.
The walking trail.
Just to light it up, we, we've seen people out there walking in the dark, just making sure that they're comfortable and protected.
This looks like it's within your budget?
Yes, so what, what we've done as well is, as y'all know, we're currently putting up some lights out at the golf course.
Oh, we finally getting that done?
Yes, sir. They, they've drilled, they've already drilled their holes and, and we're, we'll be pouring, if not later on this, this week, it'll be first thing next week. But we've contacted that same company about giving us bids for Salinas Park, so it came in at fifty-one thousand. And that's gonna be fourteen poles around the entire park.
What's the, what's the dimension on the height?
Twenty-five feet.
Okay.
And they're, they're solar, so they're, we'll have to build a concrete base. And then it comes with anchors and you just put them on top of the pillars that we build. We're currently building the pillars in-house for the golf course.
How many, how many going out at the golf course?
Six.
Right down the middle?
Three on either side of the parking lot.
It'd be a lot better than how it's lit up right now.
Oh, yeah. And you know, after our surveys, it, it, the company that we ended up going with showed the most coverage, so that's obviously one of the reasons why we went that route and if they can do it there, obviously it's gonna be pretty lit at Salinas if we go that route as well.
Awesome.
And we want to continue doing it, you know, we'll identify more parks within the city. Do that and then eventually we want to make sure we try to get some cameras out there and I mean, there's, there's a big vision to.
It makes, it makes it more inviting for people to go out there. They see that it's safe, it's well lit. They're gonna be more apt to go out there and walk and do your, do their thing. I mean, nobody wants to go out there.
That's one of the things that John and I have been doing is we're trying to identify all those parks and what we can bring and what we can bring back, because there's been a lot taken out. So it's, you know, it's just lighting is a big, it's one of the biggest components there, so that's what, that's where our vision is right now.
Less the maintenance. I like it. So do you need a consensus for this?
This is a quick question. Max, do you have any idea, since it is solar, do you know how many years of use we could get out of it? Is there a type of warranty with them for ten years, fifteen, twenty?
Those photocells will go out.
I'll, I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, just curious, just to look at to. Be aware of.
Any other questions on, on item eight? Council, do we have a consensus to move forward?
Yes.
All right. Gonna go ahead and move on to, any comments on this, Matt? We're good. We're gonna move on to item nine, discussing the award of Ratliff Ranch Driving Range renovations. Mr. Rogers.
Mayor, Council, we're excited to recommend awarding the bid for the Ratliff Ranch Driving Range renovation project to Graham Golf. The bid came in at nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. The project is a total renovation of the landing area. The design will include building, building elevated target zones or greens to simulate on-course situations, extending the teeing area, widening the teeing area a hundred feet, building a working area, cart path around the ball machine hut and netting on both the left and right side of the driving range.
You don't hit no cars on the highway?
Hopefully.
It's not good. Talking about liability. So who, who are these? I don't, John, I don't know these people. Tell me who they are.
From Houston. Golf course renovation company from Houston. Yes, sir.
When will they get started?
So that date is not set yet. Hopefully sooner than later. Ideally, it would be a little bit later in the year because we are getting into the busy season. So we do not have that date set yet.
You know how long it'd take to make those improvements?
So the total project would be two and a half to three months.
So you're gonna lengthen the range as well?
So we're gonna widen the tee line, hitting area a hundred feet. Yes, sir.
About the length?
Not lengthening it, no, sir.
How you gonna keep those kids from hitting it over the top of the net?
So, yes, sir.
You know that.
Yes, sir. We, we will, we can look at that. We can, we can see if we can.
What, what is that net out there now?
It's two hundred and forty yards and forty feet high. The range balls don't fly as far as the, your golf balls that you play.
It's a deadened ball.
Sir?
Yeah, it's a deadened ball.
Yeah, absolutely. So it is a good question. So to, to lengthen the range, to move it backwards, we would have to probably, we would have to remove the shade structure, tear a cart path. There's a little bit more that would go into that. Definitely something to take a look at though, absolutely.
Yeah, just, these kids are hitting it so far.
I agree. It's, it's a game of power now.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It is. So, but just that was a concern for me, so.
Yes, sir.
If you can, you can use those modified golf balls on those.
Right. There, there's flight control golf balls. We, we can always make an adjustment to keep the ball from going over the fence.
Okay. Any other questions? We have consensus before?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to item ten, discussing amendment article six dash seven tobacco products for the city code of ordinances.
Well, Mayor, we've gotten a few complaints, people walking in, people smoking at BGN.
Of what end?
City Hall.
City Hall.
Main entrance?
Main entrance and the north entrance. And so this is just to deal with that and if y'all are so inclined.
Any smokers in here? Anybody willing to admit you're a smoker? You know, next go around, you're gonna have to leave Planet Earth in order to have a drag. That's where it's getting to. Okay.
So anyway, there, that, that's what it is. It was just, and I believe Mr. Ronaldo's working on something to move it out, like a shed or something, I don't know. I don't know. But we're gonna move it away so that people won't be walking through the smoke.
So you can do it like you did at the airport, it'll be a glassed-in thing, whole room's full of smoke and.
And we're gonna wind up, we're gonna wind up getting liability lawsuit for having third-hand smoke on there. Okay.
Anyway, that's what it is.
Is that what it is? So basically, we need a consensus to move forward for this?
Yes, sir.
For the amendment? And so basically what it's doing is just establishing a fifty-foot. Buffer?
Just fifty foot from all the city buildings and city buildings.
So who's gonna be the, the measuring police?
I thought he was gonna do it.
You're gonna look out your window? You don't have a window. You don't have a window to look out.
It's got one of those little things that you count off fifty feet, you know, your rolls and everything.
Oh my goodness. Okay.
You can't pick it up around there, but.
All right. Is this, is this concern or employees or people coming to City Hall?
Well, both.
Both. Okay.
Both, so this is where we are, so, but it is what it is.
All right. Okay. Do we need a consensus? Council, we have a consensus? All right, we move forward. I was just talking about a protected class. Item eleven, discuss write-off for delinquent industrial district accounts. Mr. Jones.
Okay, so you know, every year we have IDAs, these in lieu of taxes.
Yeah.
And instead of us getting paid property taxes for the, these IDAs, these, these in our ETJ, we go out, we have Karen McCord who collects the money and this is, for this year.
No, she does not collect it. She sends out the notifications, yes.
But anyway, so we have a write-off total this year of six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. And of course, we can't collect it because it's not a tax, it's just basically a fee in lieu of taxes, so. And a lot of these companies are really, they're gone, they're no longer there or they've gone bankrupt. And so, but anyway, that's what we have, but. So we're gonna, we'll, we will need a consensus to put it on for the fourteen and just basically, okay, we'll write it off. It is what it is, we just don't need to collect.
It's the first time we've seen this come through the council. We've never dealt with the, with the write-off.
I know. It's the first time for everything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Strange stuff.
It's pretty small now, but.
But, but it is, but it is good though that it is such a small one. It really is a small one.
It's too small for most and too large for some.
It is, that's true.
Explain what these companies that are delinquent.
They, they just don't pay. It's like, like, a couple of the companies, like we have actually tried to collect them and bankruptcy, like they're gone, they filed bankruptcy and so just refused. So we go, Rebecca and I will go, we'll actually file a claim to try to get them, but as far as the IDAs, what they do is it's a fee of the taxes served for the center of ETJ or industrial districts. They will actually pay us what the normal property tax would be. Okay, to do business in our ETJ, these IDAs that we create that we found.
We have several.
And then a lot of times, they just go out of business, they get bankrupt, they just, they don't want payment. And so they just go about the very, very way and so, and we can't collect it and we tried to collect it. So now we get to the part, we're like a bank office, we just write it off.
In, in the discovery, we were trying to understand these IDAs, the pros and cons, so to speak.
Right.
One of the conversations with the appraisal district, because we trying to understand, the appraisal district issues, the notifications for taxes on the property, you gotta pay the taxes on the, on the property, they were being sent to Karen McCord, used to be a former director of the appraisal district that's located in Wacon. Her fee was very minimal. So we were missing the point until the appraisal district said, here's the difference, when it touches her hand and she sends it back out instead of us going direct, what happens is there's no mechanism when this happens to go and retract it. Now, the appraisal district does have that, that mechanism, but because it goes through this process, there is no mechanism, which really came to the debate whether what we wanted to do as a council. When we saw the numbers of people, of the companies actually paying, because it is in lieu of a tax bill, there, it was there. It was pretty much close dollar for dollar. So the council saw the advantage, well, you know, everybody's paying. This is the first time that we've been here since our elections is that we've seen something like this come up, so.
And they are, we're hearing, y'all are starting collecting now, right? As far as Marissa. Sorry, Billy is. Yeah, so, we are now, we brought it now internally, and so, Billy and collection is now doing it, collecting forests. It's just because she basically has walked Marissa through it. I'm going to call you out here, yeah, she basically walked Marissa through it, and this is the second year. So, what we're doing now is we're doing it ourselves internally.
Karen really didn't want to do it anymore. She retired. And the reason why we asked, why is she doing it? Because she's the only one that actually really understood the whole process.
Had the knowledge.
And had the knowledge, and so, now, she's come in to be able, so, we'll be able to handle it now, so.
Didn't we implement something in the new agreements going forward that, so, we could have some kind of teeth so we could enforce this?
Yes.
We could like lean on the property or?
Yes.
That's only this last year that we started doing.
Yeah, yeah. And, and so, we created the template to be able to address this very issue.
Correct.
Because it didn't, it didn't exist before. But we didn't know about it, and we needed to get educated, because we were like, nobody really understood, you know, the whole complex. There was a lot of moving parts in that thing.
And during that period, Karen died or?
Yeah, yeah. I don't blame her.
But now, Marissa could come up here and touch her son, but she's lying. She's got it right by the back of her hands.
Just go see her, she'll be fifty feet out there to the east. She'll be the one sitting out there by herself in some shade, working, working out in the new fitness center for you.
Put the cigarette in.
Dan, just, Dan, just out of curiosity for this proposed write-off, looking at it from age to receivables, what are we talking about? These are like one to five or five to ten?
Yeah, five or more years.
Five or more years.
Five or more years.
First month's rent, last month's rent. Let's be done with the guns.
It's not, it's not worth it.
It's not worth it.
And like BJ's independent equipment?
Yeah, BJ's a hundred and twenty-three dollars. ARC investment, seven hundred and twenty-one, the largest one is Hinkle Corp., which is five thousand, four hundred.
And like I say, I think they changed, changed hands, they filed bankruptcy, I don't know if BJ has, but I'm confident it is.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Alright, we're going to go ahead and move forward for item twelve, provide an update for current condition of Bob Darrington. Mr. Niles.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council.
Good afternoon, sir.
So, today I brought Melissa Looney. She's the operations manager of the Darrington plant. We would like to update the council on the current conditions of the Bob Darrington water reclamation plant. Based on the assessment presentation by PSI several months ago, council awarded a little over two million dollars in ARPA funds, and Mr. Beckmeyer found an additional one million dollars for safety upgrades at the Darrington plant. We're currently working with the TIPS engineer on getting quotes for replacing security fencing, installing safety hand railing, making enhancements to multiple cranes on the site, and rebuilding the grit removal system. We should have these projects lined out and under construction very soon. We estimate the overall cost of these projects to be about three point three million dollars. Although these funds helped with several safety factors, today we wanted to discuss the continuous degradation of the Bob Darrington plant. Council has already been made aware that the Darrington plant has fallen into disrepair. We have several issues with our treatment process that include down clarifiers, which allows for septic sludge to get into the aeration basins. Our aeration basins are rapidly degrading, and because we do not have grit removal, we have lost quite a bit of capacity. The rotors are not functioning properly, and they are beginning to fail. Our maintenance team spends almost half of their time working on just the aeration basins. Because the ditches have lost a lot of grit and concrete from the deterioration, we're experiencing bad bacterial growth, and we cannot produce good microorganisms that help the digestion process. The plant continues to have high ammonia concentrates from the lack of odor control, and it may be possible that we will receive additional violations from TCEQ if we cannot get this under control. Honestly, the plant process is from the late seventies and is extremely outdated. We would advise council to consider all possibilities on updating and upgrading our treatment process at the plant. We are having a hard time keeping up with repairs, and our parts are becoming obsolete. The team works diligently on making repairs, but it's becoming harder and harder to maintain daily operations. Right now, the plant is rated at a little under fourteen million gallons per day. We are currently treating around seven million gallons a day. However, with our ditch capacity compromised, we would not be able to handle the fourteen million gallons a day. As the city continues to grow, we will require to treat additional wastewater daily. If we do not make major upgrades and repairs, we will potentially end up with a catastrophic failure. We respectfully request that council work with city management on the possibility of funding needed to make these upgrades and repairs at the Bob Darrington plant. Excuse me. It's vital to our community that we have a viable treatment plant for today's current conditions and our continuous growth throughout the future years. I thank you for your time and consideration on this matter, and we can answer any questions that you have.
Counsel, I'm going to open it up for you, the session on the DAS, ask Mr. Niles and Melissa, any questions?
Are you trying to say we just need to shut it down and start again?
I wouldn't say shut it down, but we need to do something quickly. And we need to, to make sure that we are putting in current technology and making sure that those aeration basins become obsolete. They are not vital anymore. We're going to have, we're going to continue to limp this long, as long as possible, but we need to do something in the next three to four years.
When do we see the peak of, of treatment? Is it the summers, spring, summer?
Yeah, on average, you can think of it for pretty much anything that you have going through your water treatment plant. So, we're going to average about thirty MGD going out of our water treatment facility over the summer months. You can figure that almost a quarter of that's going to go through your treatment facilities.
Wow.
So, Kevin, if we, if we were to just continue like the three point three million, repairing this old seventies technology, are we throwing good money after bad?
Yes, sir.
You know, I think I hear you saying facility needs to be.
It needs to receive severe upgrades. Again, the aeration technology is outdated. There, you're not going to find a new plant that uses that, that type of technology. It's from the late seventies.
Explain what the aeration process is right now. Is it, I think they explained something about squeezing.
Right, yeah. It continues, it flows through the ditch system.
And, and so, basically, what we're doing is disposing a lot of, all that material, but it's wet, which is adding cost, because we still got to dispose it at the Republic, right?
Yeah, it goes through the belt press.
But a lot of it, it's all wet.
Correct. It goes through a belt press, and we squeeze out the water, right? And then, we have sludge.
Which was good technology when it opened in nineteen eighty.
Correct.
So, for right now, can we build a retention pond to put this sludge in so it evaporates? In the hot summers, we have, we should be losing at least.
Back in the day, they had drying beds that were out there, that they were doing that with. But I don't see that as being a feasible approach going forward. But it is a possibility.
Okay, because, so, we, just to give you an example, produce water out in the field, is aerated up and evaporates while it's doing it. Doesn't get rid of all of it, but it gets rid of at least sixty to eighty percent of the water. Especially during the summer, it's, it's quick. So, you're getting rid of it. The dry would come pretty quick on this. What little bit of liquids are in there, we can evaporate them up by aerating them up. So, that would be a temporary fix until we could get something passed. Because basically.
Are we going to not have to pass a bond for this? That's my question. Let me ask this question. So, Melissa, you've worked out there the longest.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't that aeration system in the drying beds existed prior to eighteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-three?
It was there until about nineteen ninety-six.
Ninety-six?
Yes, sir.
And then, you got away from it to this system that's completely?
Yes, sir.
And now, it's just, and so, what's happening? The rotors are being broken, the stuff that's coming into it?
I, this is just my belief, we've gone about fifteen years without a grit removal unit, and I, I believe that that grit has gotten into those ditches, and it's, so, I might have a forty-eight hour detention time. The water is supposed to stay in the ditch for forty-eight hours. But because, instead of this, I'm dealing with this, because the grit is all at the bottom, now, my detention time has changed from forty-eight to twenty-four. Sorry, I talk a lot with my hands.
No, no, you're fine. So, so, here, here's a question. A, a new, a new plant would take, and, and I don't know this, I said, what would it take? You got design?
Seven years minimum.
It would seven, eight years.
Before you open?
Correct.
Do we have, we don't have seven years?
I do not believe so.
So, you have any recommendations of how this council can proceed?
There's other technologies that we can upgrade and put in the plant, where they can come in and, and do bioreactors and things of that nature, where we could use the current infrastructure, the same clarifiers, the same piping system, but it would eliminate those ditches. That's the main issue that you have. Those ditches are deteriorating so quickly and rapidly that that's what's causing the failure within the overall system. So, we could use what they call BDR in, at the plant itself, and use that system along with the current infrastructure. That would buy you a good another ten to fifteen years.
So, I'm trying to get a visual. So, the ditches where all the waste is going in? Or what, explain the ditches.
It's where all of the water is, is coming in, and so, it goes around, you know, these ditches, and then, all of it goes out to the clarifiers, and just the clean water comes out of the clarifiers. That's where we chlorinate, we filtrate, we do all of those things, and we sell that water.
You're transferring all the waste into one ditch, and then, you start jumping in? Is that, am I getting that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just to simplify for my terms.
So, the concrete's breaking up, it's getting in there.
Yeah, it's breaking up, and when you get concrete floating around there, they get into those rotor blades. Those rotor blades snap off, so now, you've got them flowing through the ditches. With that concrete and those rotor blades going through the ditches, that just causes more potential damage.
And we don't know what's deteriorated below the ammonia levels with the H2S.
Honestly, I mean, most of the experts say that below waterline, we're probably okay as far as the concrete deterioration, because you're not getting the oxidation, and you're not getting the sea, the, the heat and everything for that concrete to expand like it is above water. So, I think below water, we're going to be okay. But again, the capacity, because we haven't had a grit removal system for over a decade. So, the capacity of those ditches themselves has pretty much been cut in half.
I, I started back in two thousand nine, and that grit removal unit didn't work in two thousand nine.
So, that's, I mean, as far as the ARPA funds, the ARPA funds are going to get that in place immediately. We got to get that fixed immediately. So, the ARPA funds are going to help cover getting the grit removal system in place currently. But again, those ditches are not going to last you another fifteen, twenty years. They're just not. That system is old, that technology is old, and we need to, we need to get up in modern technology.
I would say that, you know, in a perfect world, you know, I, I don't even know what a cost of, of, of a plant would be. A bond issue, you know, you don't want to do it on an off-year. That would put it twenty-six, because you have to have a lot of education. Mind you that even if it even passes, twenty-six is not even a presidential year, is it? It's a.
You have to do it this November, Mayor, in my opinion, you're going to do it.
Yeah, there's no, there's no time for that.
You know, I understand.
Yeah, there's, I mean, we're, we're April, there's no way.
So, we don't have enough time to put a bond together this year, is that what you're saying?
Well, you know, the thing is, is you have to educate, you have to come in here, and you have to, you have to hire a company, you have to get in here, and you have to get, there's a lot that goes to it, especially, I mean, just for the, for the, the water treatment plant, that took, what, a couple of years to fund it? Well, it, it went to CL, didn't even go to a bond, but for a, for a, for a bond, it's quite a bit.
So, Mayor, I just want to let, we do have some companies that may have some funding availability that can come in and educate us on some funding sources. There, there are other companies, I mean, we've been reached out by multiple organizations that can help us with that, so.
Oh, there's a company for every, every issue, yeah, there's no doubt. Okay, so.
Some, some of these are a lot like the water meter type things where you're guaranteed a savings, and if you don't meet that savings, then they pay for it.
Bless you.
Where in, with this one, unlike other projects, we're in such bad shape that they couldn't guarantee the full price, but be able to lower it. It's a remediation, it's not a rebuild. The numbers that I can get on a rebuild are somewhere around three hundred million.
On a rebuild?
Yeah.
Versus a new, which would be what?
No, I mean, not a rebuild, on a new.
On a new.
You're looking at a half a billion dollars for a new.
How much?
Half a billion dollars.
Yeah, three hundred to half a billion.
Well, yeah, I mean, with the interest rates today.
What the, what these companies, like Kevin's talking about, they'll offer programs on remediation, basically putting in the new grit removal, things like that, getting this one up to where it may last fifteen years. It, no way it does the way it is today. But, but you almost have to have it last that long. Even if, even if you had a half a billion dollars in your hand right now, this thing's got to last another eight to ten years, period.
Yeah.
Just ask.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we, and if we introduce any type of other treatment, you got to keep in mind, we're also going to be required to go through TCEQ and their permitting, permit process, and that takes quite a bit of time.
That's tedious, yeah.
That's more years.
That's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's more years.
Yes.
The design process and the permitting process, before you even get to construction.
I appreciate Kevin, he's been working on this with all these different companies, nonstop, pretty much, but that's why it's not, because it's.
I really believe this is a dire situation, and we need to get going. I'd like to ask the council, any other questions and discussion for consensus for Kevin to go out and go with management and Mr. Benal to, you know, bring us some presentations and some options that we, this council can look at.
Mayor, here's my, here's my comment on the whole deal, is that, you know, we're in a position where we, it just seems like things, and since I've been on this council, getting, getting pushed back and pushed back and pushed back, and someday is the time you got to pay the fiddler, and we're there.
Yep.
Our town's growing, it's growing fast. We don't have time, and so, I think it's imperative that we do what we can do now, in light of, and at the same time perhaps, start looking at a rebuild, a new, a new plant. I, I think that's the only way you're going to get out of the trap, because fifteen years isn't going to hold us very long. It's not as fast as this town's growing, and we all know it's going at a tremendous clip, and it's not going to stop, doesn't look like. So, you know, I think we need to be proactive here, and maybe do a couple of things at the same time. Not just one, not just putting a Band-Aid on it and then walking away from it, and leaving it for another council to fix. That's what's been happening in the past, is what it looks like to me. Every time we get one of these situations, it's like, oh, my gosh. It's like water treatment plant, same thing. If we'd, if we'd have waited on that and done, and waited to try to get a bond floated, then we'd still be three years down the road. We wouldn't even be close to being a drainage. That's what concerns me.
So, the way I have presented it to my department as a whole, is I see it in three different phases. The first phase is the ARPA funds, getting those ARPA funds utilized and getting the safety measures taken care of immediately. The second phase is redoing the current plant with as much modern technology as we possibly can to basically keep it viable for the next fifteen to twenty years. And then, the final phase would be a, a new treatment plant.
Okay. We got to work towards a new treatment plant, in my opinion.
So, yeah, it don't really matter what we do, we still need to start on that. So, somebody else is just going to kick it down the bucket, saying, we got fifteen, let's let somebody else worry about it.
And Mr. Niles, this has started on that remediation. There's something that has to be done. And just like Mr. Thompson's saying, we're growing leaps and bounds. Does the treatment plant even need to be in the same place? Or do we need two treatment plants? I mean, there's, there's a lot of questions there.
There's a bunch, yeah.
And if we can stretch this one out to fifteen or twenty years with needed upgrades, then we have two options at that point, and we also have time to pay for it.
Mr. Niles, right now, you had mentioned the BDR system. What is that, and can that be something, something that can be done now with the ARPA funds?
That, that'd be quite, that's, that's a substantial extent. I, I couldn't put a number on it, and it's not going to be able to, you're not going to be able to use a couple million dollars. You're looking tens of millions of dollars.
See, that's the problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me.
Well, I like Mr. Niles' plan. ARPA funds is fresh face, which is under.
Well, I like Mr. Niles' plan, uh, ARPA funds is the first phase, which is underway right now. Then, uh, look into the second phase of modernization, and then the third phase is a, the new plant. That way, you know, we're looking far down, down the future. Because you know a dollar today is not gonna be a dollar.
And again, keep in mind, TCEQ is tightening and tightening their restrictions and regulations. We're gonna be forced to have a new plant.
Yeah.
There's no question about it.
Yeah.
You know, to your point about the money, Mayor, I just saw a deal the other day where people think inflation's running at nine, ten, twelve percent, and that's where we're running, about forty percent. If you all look at all the costs, the overruns that we've had everywhere have been more than twenty-five or thirty percent. They've all been closer to that forty percent. At least that's what I'm hearing from contractors.
Yep, it is. All right, so we have a consensus to move forward with Mr. Niles' recommendations?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, bring us back a new plant?
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Keep it moving, keep it moving. I did hear, I did hear the president say that inflation is under control.
Right. What's it, what's this definition of... I forgot to ask. Also. Are we still able to make water to sell?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's, that's money coming in, so...
Okay, how much money?
So, I just wanna make sure we're still under that.
Yep, yeah. We have an obligation. We're gonna move on to item thirteen, discuss the award of the Crane Avenue Paving and Utility Improvement. All right. How you doing, sir?
Good, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is to consider award of bid for Crane Avenue Paving and Utility Improvements. The bids for this project were opened on April tenth, twenty twenty-four, and two bids were submitted for this project. The lowest bidder was Riz Albert, in the amount of ten million nine hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and two cents. The purpose of this project is to reconstruct approximately thirty-six thousand square yards of roadway, which is approximately one point two linear miles, and the project will include carbon gas replacement, concrete valley, handicap access ramp, concrete sidewalk installations. The project also includes approximately five thousand five hundred linear feet of various size water, water lines, and twenty manhole replacements. Uh, the project cost will be split between public works and utility departments, and public works portion will be approximately fifty-nine percent, and, uh, utilities portion is forty-one percent. We would like to reserve twelve percent contingency for this project, and total amount to be reserved, including twelve percent contingency is twelve million, two hundred thousand dollars. And I'll be happy to answer to your questions.
So, what was written last minute on that row, in utilities?
The number?
What number was your, your, uh, estimate to start with?
The estimate for public was, uh, approximately six point five million dollars, and utility portion is four point five million.
Yeah, what was your estimation originally before you put it out to bid?
The original estimate was six million dollars for the total project.
There's your forty percent.
Yep, sure enough.
Anyway, you wanna cut it?
We've been holding on to bond money from two thousand seven?
We paid, we paid more in interest than when we got back. Two thousand seven, million dollars. Is there any more money from that? Is that it? Okay.
Maybe Biden will give us some, some of that inflation and money back to us.
I'm not gonna hold my breath. Okay, council, do we have any questions? This is all entire District Five, isn't it?
Yeah. No, this is one.
One.
This is my district.
I thought, I thought the boundary...
I think it is on the border line.
It, so it, it saddles both?
Both, yes.
I thought, they didn't change, I thought they changed.
Nope.
No, it, it doesn't go, it didn't go that far, uh, east.
Okay, I was wrong, maybe I, maybe I was dreaming a different map.
I'm on the east side of the border, and everybody else is on the west side.
Okay, so this is both one and two, one and, one and five.
Yeah, there's.
All right, so we're getting, when, uh, when does this, uh, when does this kicking off?
Uh, the award, uh, we are anticipating the award in May fourteenth and plus probably another two months.
Okay.
At least.
And then how long, how long it's gonna last?
Uh, we have three hundred working days.
How much?
Three hundred working days.
For a year.
Yep. Yep, this is gonna disrupt, uh, uh, traffic to Hector. Yeah. Okay.
Just like traffic to City Hall coming down Second Street.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's true. Uh, any, uh, council, any other questions? Any other interrogation, all right? All right? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Seeing there's no more business before this city council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn by council member
So moved.
Suoner. Uh, second by council member
A second.
Vasquez, all in favor and indicating the same, not?
Aye.
All those opposing, indicating the same side. Motion management, we are adjourned, we'll see you at six.